Coming to today's Board of Trustees meeting of March 11th, if we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So first we'll start with public comment if anybody wants to come on up to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Mike McCready, 4957 Bloomfield Ridge. Nice to see everybody tonight. Many communities, including Bloomfield Township right now, are suffering, not suffering, but having problems with staffing their police department and sometimes fire department. Can't find recruits. And I've worked in a community where we had hired a human resources person just to go out and recruit officers to fill these roles. I don't know if the township has looked at that, but fire and police have always been a cornerstone of this community. And I'm reading in the paper about more criminal activity that we're seeing. We have many seniors in our community, as well as young families with the children walking to school or walking to buses that need protection. I haven't seen much on social media or televised recruiting efforts. So I encourage you to maybe start looking outside the realm of your typical fill out an application, come on in, maybe do something on social media. Also, maybe look at getting a recruiter to come in unless you maybe already do to look for candidates. Cause I know we require a four-year degree here. I don't think we need to give up our quality of the candidates we're looking, but maybe reach out. And with all the crime that's going on that we're reading about, really, police and fire protection need to be a cornerstone of our community. And I just wanted to make that suggestion tonight because I know we're short a few officers and just trying to give you some ideas to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, we definitely agree. We were proud to be runners-up in a national award for the recruiting that's been done on social media. So you are correct, there's a nationwide problem. We're just glad that we're one of the four thinkers out there putting on all that social media and video out there that came in number two, but was pretty close behind the International Association of Chiefs of Police. But you are correct. Great. Does anybody, nobody else from the public? So we will close that. So next we have approving the board minutes of February 28th. Unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion. So motion by trustee Faqee, support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next we have considering the approval of Office 365 ARPA expenditure and we have Director Will Bamancheck.
Hi, good evening, board. I feel like I'm sure quite often now. So tonight I'm asking for ARPA approval for Office 365 moving exchange from on-premise to the cloud and reference to Microsoft Enter ID. But I did want to explain what some of these terms actually mean before we go forward. So Microsoft offers two clouds. There's a consumer cloud and consumer business cloud, and there's a government cloud. And we are going to be going to the government cloud, satisfy our CEDs requirements, so our data stays within the US. There is in this slide here, there is, it's operated by screened US personnel. Like I said, all the physical locations are within the United States. It does provide us CEDs compliance with our police department, which is a requirement to keep that data within the United States. And it's like I mentioned before, moving to the cloud will give us kind of really infinite scalability. So we don't really necessarily worry about storage like we do now. Enter ID. So Enter ID is a kind of a shortened term for entrance. So right now, all of our authentication occurs within these walls and we are kind of limited by where devices are, who's operating that device. There is some limitations we have there. So for instance, we do not supply email outside the United States. So if you are traveling, even if you frequent Canada, typically without a request to IT and thus knowing your geolocation, we don't provide that access. The entrance ID that's considered a signal, where you are, what type of device you are, who you are, and if you're enrolled in our system or not. So we can provide access to data and email really anywhere across the world. So we will not have some of those restrictions as well. It actually does also something called conditional access. So let's say if Martin is at home and he accesses his email from home, we typically see Martin at home at 5:30 or 6 o'clock at night. We know what his device is, but Martin may not be in California a few hours later at 3 o'clock in the morning accessing the same email from a different device. So what conditional access can do is if it sees those particular conditions that we lay out, at that point, we may re-authenticate you. We may ask you for multi-factor authentication or some second or third form of identity. So that's just conditional access that gives us those benefits now. Moving from exchange on-premise to exchange online, currently, all of our exchange and email resides here. So with that, we are bound to equipment, we're bound to storage requirements, doing backups locally instead of locally first and then to the cloud. With exchange online, we provide greater reliability because we're dealing with Microsoft's full cloud. I'm gonna skip across the admin center, but security kind of goes back to our conditional access requirements that we'll be able to put in place. It's easier for IT to maintain. It also allows us the flexibility. We are currently in a few years exploring managed services. And it gives us flexibility due to that. Like I mentioned before, it's related to access from anywhere, secure access from anywhere in the plan. If there's not any questions, IT is requesting the ARPA expenditure for a total of $46,098.73. We are providing 302 entry licenses, which is one per employee, 251 exchange licenses online, which that is, that's for mostly, that's outside of the 51 people that will be G1. Those will be just access to exchange. What that does is reduces costs for our public safety, fire and police departments. And what we would consider maybe, I don't want to call them this, but a non-essential employee outside the office if we were in the case of a disaster. So we've identified 51 people that will get a full Office 365 license. That includes Teams, access to OneDrive, which should give us file access anywhere we would like, SharePoint, Power Automate, there's quite a few other tools while with that. So for that, if you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. So now I'd look for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Burnett.
Supporting, support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That does pass.
All right.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Next, we have considered the approval of the Road Commission for Oakland County RCOC yearly maintenance permit. And this will be presented by Paul Horan, our Department of Public Works Superintendent.
Good evening, board. It's nice to have these board meetings with a little daylight left, right? I'm here to present the 2024-2025 RCOC Bloomfield Township Annual Maintenance Agreement yearly permit. The scope of work within this agreement covers the maintenance of the road services on the residential roads within the township owned by RCOC, not private roads. All the major roadways remaining, remains the responsibility of RCOC and MDOT. Any maintenance not associated with the road surface also remains the responsibility of RCOC or MDOT depending on their jurisdiction. This agreement is for $810,166.26, which is a 3% increase from 2023. This agreement has been reviewed by the township attorney and everything is in order. With that said, it is the recommendation of the staff that the board approves the 2024-2025 RCOC annual maintenance agreement.
And then one thing to mention too, that we have, we're working on the supplemental one about the emergency agreement. So that's not part of the general maintenance, but when they had a failure in January that affected Commerce, Westfield, Waterford and us, we will now have a little bit more leeway on when we can act when we feel an emergency.
Yeah, we will be sitting down.
It never existed before, but it'll happen going forward.
Yes, talking about mutual aid agreement and stuff like that. Yep, correct.
So that is separate from the normal maintenance agreement. That's something that will be.
Yeah, basically, hey, you guys are in trouble, let us know, kind of thing, right?
And if they, if they say that they're not in trouble and we can prove that they are, we then will have that next level of clearly you are in trouble, so we're just gonna do it. So again, this was something that was never allowed before, but being the only state road division at a township, it does give you a little more leeway to work with. Does anyone have any questions about the maintenance agreement?
I do.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a question for you, Paul, or if this is for Dirk. The second paragraph of the memo says that current the provisions set forth in Public Acts 51, it's a 3% increase. Is that 3% in the act? Or is that in the negotiation with the road commission? Inflation has been more than 3%, so I mean, we should be getting a higher number, I take it, but.
Opposed the act.
Oh shit, okay.
Some years it's been for us, some years it's been less.
Okay.
Believe your team works with them.
Yeah, that was a 3% increase of last year's amount. Last year's amount was $786,569.
Okay.
Are there any other possibilities? Uh, the motion. So moved, motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
That's tough.
Next we have considered approval of the Cape Seal contract, again presented by Paul Horan.
Good evening, board. Welcome back. Welcome.
Nice to have a board meetings where it's.
Little days.
Groundhogged it.
I've been here before. Uh, I'm here to present the contract award for the 2024 Cape Seal Project. The Cape Seal process is designed to extend the life of asphalt roadways in fair to good conditions. This method involves material being sprayed on the pavement and covered with fine stone chips or sand, and then covered with a slurry seal that seals, that seals the pavement and bonds the areas that may be cracking. So basically, once that slurry seal is covered, anything that's below it that had a small crack or whatnot, that bonds the chip seals to that to prevent any water to get in there, any freeze-dull stuff. So it prevents the water from leaching into the cracks and whatnot, which that's a big issue with, that makes the roads worse as time goes by. Seal those cracks, keep the water out. They last a lot longer. This method is utilized in other communities. Birmingham does it, Auburn Hills, in Wayne County, Garden City does it. And is approved by RCOC as a pavement preservation process on the county roads. In 2018, we did a pilot program on township roads with great results to this day. And as a matter of fact, I talked with our road foreman, Dwayne, and we actually had one pothole request to be filled in the areas that we did in 2018. That was the first one in these five years. So it's a great process. It lasts, it's actually last, they recommend, or they say five to seven years. We're actually exceeding that. We're at the five-year mark now, but it's gonna go way past that. It all based, depends on conditions and whatnot, but you get five to seven years, we're exceeding that with the one that we currently did. The 2024 Cape Seal Project will consist of applying the Cape Seal product over roughly a mile and a half of roadway located within various areas of the township. It's important to note that this process is being utilized in areas that in the past would not have received any pavement preservation work. If not for this process, it would, you know, we would basically just be potholing or a crack seal or what. It wouldn't be damaged enough to do an overlay or replacement or stuff like that. So it's actually, it slows down the process before you need to do an overhaul of the road. The 2024 Cape Seal Project was put out to bid in January 24. The lowest and only bidder was Highway Maintenance and Construction Company, who also was the company that did the 2018 Cape Seal Project. With that said, it is the recommendation of our staff that the contract be awarded to Highway Maintenance and Construction Company for the completion of the 2024 Cape Seal Project. The budget for this project is not to exceed $300,000.
Do I have any questions, Paul?
No, I was just gonna say, the 2018 program was fantastic with the pilot program. And it, as you said, is really has far exceeded the expectations. And when it was first presented, Birmingham had already been using it. And now so many of the surrounding communities are using it because it really in the long run will give us a longer life to the, to some of these roads. So I'm glad we're able to provide this to the residents.
Right. I mean, even an overlay of asphalt, it has a five to seven year life. So this process is a lot cheaper, a lot more efficient, more areas are able to do it because of the conditions. You get to them before they get bad. So, yep.
So I have a question. How are you choosing which area? And we have not done any since 2018, is that right?
Yes, it was put out to bid, I believe, in 2019. And after that was awarded, the contractor had, I believe, some issues that he could not fulfill the contract. So he actually backed out. And again, at the time, they were the only bid. And since then, with COVID and all that, we have not put it out, but we are putting it out now.
Because I remember in 2019, when the previous administration that we all inherited some of those budget cuts, the road department took the biggest hit. I believe over a million dollars was hit. And so it's the cave seal, it's the concrete. I mean, we finally have as a board brought back that one million plus, we gave another million this year. But we had to come back from all the cuts that happened.
Well, and I do recall that, and I know this one very well because, and I was curious how you chose, you know, which areas to do. If it was only done in 2018, then my subdivision was one of the ones that happened to get selected. And I have to say, you know, we had tried to get our roads redone and it had failed like twice in a row. And then we were approached with this. And I'm not, you know, sure how, maybe because we'd been trying to get, you know, repaved. But I have to say, it's held up very well, you know? We knew that it was new, we knew Birmingham had used it successfully. And anybody can come look at my subdivision to see, and I couldn't remember what year it was. I knew it was pre-COVID. We all do that, you know, when was that, pre-COVID? So 2018, so we're coming up on six years?
Yep.
And it's held up quite well.
Yeah, we're definitely saying, and to answer your question about how it's determined, that is based on our field staff, our foremen, our crew leaders, the guys that are actually out there. This is seeing these roads on a daily basis. And we trust their professional opinion. So they analyze all the roads and they put a few on, you know, depending on how bad they are. Worst of the worst, you know, gets the overlays and whatnot. These ones, we'll have a list of, we'll probably even have another list that, we'll have another list ready for next year as well for the next ones up that are ready for this process. So the determination is all based on the, we will ask the foreman and the crew leader for the road department, hey, give us this year's roads that are eligible for Cape Seal and we go by that.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, I really have been in favor of it. We didn't know what we were getting. We knew, we knew, there were a couple subdivisions. I know we weren't the only one. And like I said, I'm not sure how we were selected. And I was not involved as a township at the time, but it's been great. Thank you so much for this.
Yep.
Anyone else? If I look for motion?
Some of.
Motion by trustee Burnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you. Next, we have considered approval of an amended second resolution to reschedule the public hearing concerning Phase Two of Bloomfield Village's Road Pavement Project Special Assessment District SAD 426 on Monday, April 8. That seems like a Cory Almst type.
It's a Dirk Becker leg.
You and Cory.
I'm not used to being up here talking to you guys with all like a room full of angry people, so.
Take advantage.
This is the typical board. You're used to SAD meetings.
So, um, we are waiting on our final bid letting from RCOC on Phase One and Phase Two of the village. It did become very apparent though, that based on their bid letting date of March 26th, we were not going to have enough time to receive our bid from RCOC and give the public their 10-day notice of their second public hearing. So we are just asking to reschedule that public hearing from April 8th of 2024 to April 22nd of 2024. And that is for both Phase One and Phase Two of the bench.
So do we have any questions of that first one? If not, I'd look for a motion?
Some of.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky, support. Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that one passes. Now we have considered the approval of the amended second resolution to reschedule the public hearing concerning Phase One of Bloomfield Village's Road Paving Special Assessment Number 427 from April 8th to April 22nd.
Same thing. I would love to see you guys on April 22nd instead of April 8th.
Any questions? Any motion?
Some of.
Motion by trustee Burnett, support by trustee Faqee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Beautiful. Thank you for all the hard work. She does handle, our SADs are probably the most toughest thing that we all deal with as well, since it's usually a 50.1 kind of response. So thank you for all the work you do on that. Next, we have consideration of Verizon's request to place a pole in the right of way at 1990 East Squirrel Valley Road in excess of 40 feet. I'm just, you know, this is actually Alana Knox that would normally be presenting, but today we have Dirk Becker leg.
The B team?
No, you're normally the A team. When it comes to small cell though.
She is the A team, absolutely. So this is a presentation, I believe Sean put together. And first of all, let me make it clear by way of background that this is not approving the small cell facility that's being proposed. All we're looking at today is one singular issue. And that is whether the pole can be 47.5, 47 feet and 5 inches tall as opposed to 40 inches. Our ordinance, our small cell slash DAS ordinance requires that poles have a maximum height of 40 feet. But there's also a provision that allows the township board to allow a taller height if the township board thinks it's appropriate. That's all that's being considered tonight and simply and only the height of the pole. If the board were approved at the height of the pole, the entire facility, including the little nodule or small cell that goes on top, still has to be approved. That's going through the permit process now. So all we're addressing is the height. The proposed pole is located generally in the vicinity of Squirrel Road and East Squirrel Valley Road. It is proposed to replace a current, currently existing 40-foot pole with this new 47.5-inch pole. There's a second slide, I think, if somebody's controlling the slides. Thank you. That's what the proposed pole would look like with the small cell, obviously at the very top of it. I think there's one more slide, I think. And that's, that's the slide on the left is the pole that exists now, the 40-foot tall pole. The pole on the right is the proposed pole with a nodule on top to give you a sense of, you know, what it would look like. Verizon, for reasons beyond my scope of comprehension, is not here tonight. They've sent a letter, an email, I think later, late this afternoon, that I had a chance to look at, indicating that the, at least the stated reason they claim for needing the 47-foot 5-inch pole, the additional seven plus feet, is because of some separation between the DTE wires, the AT&amp;T wires and their wires. That's the stated reason, but again, they're not here to explain it. All we have is the particular email that they sent. If the board is inclined to deny it, if the board's inclined to grant it, that's fine. If the board's inclined to deny it, the basis, in my opinion, for the denial would be that denying the request would not unreasonably prevent this DAS system from still operating. There have been some other communications and maybe Angela or Sean or Andrea can clarify them more, but it's my understanding that Verizon's response was, well, if we don't get the 47-plus foot pole, we'll just add one more 40-foot pole, which they are perfectly entitled to do, provided they can meet all the other occupational requirements of our ordinance as well as RCOC requirements. So if you were to deny it, if you take what Verizon set at face value, then you may end up with one more 40-foot pole besides the one that's currently there now. That's what they say. The only other thing that I think I would, I'll just leave it at that at this point. Just answer questions if there are any or if anybody.
We have our small cell wireless, hold on, no questions. We have our small cell wireless team here. So we also have Sean, Angie, Angela, sorry, and Andrea. Does anyone want to come up and talk about the other comments that have gone back and forth? Just to help loop us all in or is this cover it pretty good? Are you all set?
Don't really have anything additional. We're here to answer any questions.
Okay, then you guys can come near the mics because I.
Sure. And I just want to let the board know, because I learned it actually today myself for the first time. The small cell committee is something that was created by ordinance, by our small cell ordinance, chapter 32. It doesn't specifically call it the small cell committee in our ordinance, but it does provide that all review of these small cell applications has to go through the review of township employees, which are to include engineering, environmental staff, PBO staff, township attorney, and other designees that are appointed by the supervisor. So that's the genesis of the creation of that committee.
Yeah, so hi, everybody. This is, we are the, for lack of a better terminology, the Small Cell Committee. We have, all three of us have been working alongside with our township attorneys, getting prepared for this onset of applications for small cell wireless facilities within the township. And we were able to, a few years ago, the township was able to adopt a small cell wireless ordinance that we use as a basis for our reviews, as well as we have a checklist for reviews. In this instance, as part of that ordinance, they do have the opportunity to seek a greater height with permission from the township board. So you've heard, albeit a very brief description of why they need to increase the pole height. We also feel like it's important to have the township board's input, as this is kind of like the beginning of our applications. And so this is, and of course, this is like our first small cell with our new ordinance, our new application, and here we are. So we really were hoping to just check all the boxes and have everything comply and everything be good. But in this instance, you have a request for something to be six and a half feet taller. I don't really particularly have anything else additional to add. I do know that there were some conversations with the, in this instance, with that adjacent neighbor that lives the closest to that pole. I do know that there's been conversations between Engineering Environmental Services and having correspondence back to that resident in terms of removing any scrub brush and understanding what the parameter will be of any disturbances. That's about as far as we've had in terms of discussions with any immediately adjacent neighbors. Other than that, I don't, do you guys have anything to add?
I'll just kind of add to Dirk's point. Earlier last week and this week, we were trying to get some explanation from Verizon or Telecad, their partner company, regarding why the pole had to be placed, or new replacement pole had to be put in at seven and a half feet higher than what's there now. And getting a clear, concise answer from them was very difficult. They referenced the National Electrical Safety Code and some sections out of that, which I think have to do with separation requirements between communication lines and power lines. However, I'm not a telecommunications engineer. I don't know the National Electrical Safety Code. I was kind of reaching for more information regarding the separation requirements between fiber lines, but also any separation requirements for, between those lines and the antenna system. I was trying to see if there's a way to either decrease the height of the pole or just verify that that is the height that needed to be put in. It's likely that that is the pole height that needs to be installed, but I'm just looking for that verification from them. And I didn't quite feel confident coming into this meeting that they had fully addressed that.
Okay. We're on the line.
And this might be for Dirk. In order to get verification or in order to take action on this, if it's important enough to Verizon, I would think it's important enough for them to be here or to bring somebody here. So if we were to table this until they decide to come here, or does it have to be?
There's a shot clock that we've already gone past, because they have agreed to today as a new date.
Okay.
So the only actions under our ordinance and state law that you can take are granted or denied.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. We, yeah, have a shot clock and then we actually already extended it by fifteen days. So the new approval date is at the end of this month. So.
Yeah. So I had two questions. One is what is, if we allow this pole to be seven and a half feet taller, is that gonna set a precedent? Everybody's gonna want a forty-seven and a half foot tall pole is my first concern. Um, you know, we're opening up a bigger issue. But the other one is that there was a, um, resident letter that came around to the board earlier. And they were saying that it's particularly close to their property and suggested a whole bunch of new locations, which is kind of interesting that they did that. But in looking at what they proposed, if Verizon says whether we give them the forty-seven and a half or not, whether they replace that or they say, well, we're just gonna put another forty-foot pole, can, do we have any negotiation with Verizon to say, can you put it, you know, halfway between two houses or can you put it further away from homes because people are concerned about that?
So the first, the first question about the precedent, it does, does not set a precedent. Each of these you consider separately based on the location, topography, all kinds of other things. So it would not create a precedent. The other issue though, if they, if they want to put another forty-foot pole and then it meets our requirements, you have to approve it. So you do not have a lot of latitude to try to negotiate fair. You know, you can certainly ask, you can try to be cooperative, but at the end of the day, uh, if they want to put another forty-foot pole and it meets our requirements and it meets our CLC's requirements for their right-of-way, um, you would have to approve it.
And to add to the residence comment, I actually oddly called, uh, the clerk's office this morning. I was able to talk with her. Um, she, the letter that we sent out, we sent out just a courtesy notice to the neighboring residents of this um, small cell wireless and she, the letter was kind of vague in what it was. She made it, she thought it was like a um, brand-new pole being like, like a bigger pole and like wasn't understanding the the thing of it. And I was able to explain to her that it's not like a huge new pole. It is a new pole, but with something added to it. So she, she was kind of confused by that, but I was able to clarify for her and she she understood what I meant by that and as well as what Dirk just mentioned of moving it to different locations is up to Verizon, as always, they meet statute.
Thank you.
These. Um, couple of things. So I drove by the site today and kind of looked over specifically where that resident was asking about these other areas. So I believe they're gonna only go in the easement that's allowed by public access. Is that correct?
Am I right? No, if they, yes, they can go the right-of-way certainly with provided they meet all the requirements of ordinance. It can be other places, but you, they can't put it on a private property owner's property without the private property owner's permission.
Because a lot of the places that she was doing was other private property or part of that association to the.
And and private property is okay, but the the private property owner would have to get permission to.
Correct. So, so you can't, we can't say that you can put it in a different place that we don't have rights to, right? Which in some of the, and frankly, she had done. Correct. I also had met with some of the other neighbors who did not seem to have a problem as long as it was limited on site. And we did the forty-seven foot pole and I appreciate the animation here because we didn't have that originally in our packet. When we were looking at his house, he could not see it, even the pole we were talking about from his house without any foliage on the trees. So he wasn't concerned associated with it. Again, he was a little further away. But again, he was on the street just to the west of this in that little small four-unit complex there. So again, another neighbor, not with them, that was not a concern with the height. Again, I'm glad I got to see this because I was a little concerned about how big this was and how big was the existing pole. Um, so when I went out there, I couldn't tell if it's a forty-foot pole, is the pole actually a shorter pole? Cause it's a one-off pole. And if our worry is if Verizon's gonna put another pole in, it could still be end up being closer to her or affect even more neighbors in that area. Versus may only affect one neighbor. If we change it or allow them that ability, it may end up negatively affecting more neighbors. So that is a concern.
Does anyone else have more? I had the question that where Angela was going was, um, so know that noting that the ultimate fear is how big it's been set anywhere from a pizza box to a sixty-three cubic foot refrigerator size. So my concern was, is it seven feet because they need the separation for communication? We all know that we have some dead spots in this township that we want to fix. Or was it seven feet to put a sixty-three cubic foot up there? So I guess that was one of my concerns is what the.
They claim. And again, it would be really helpful if they were here to explain that.
Right.
So I'm explaining it secondhand. But as it was relayed to me, um, it it would, the seven, additional seven feet and five inches would help eliminate some dead zones.
Okay.
Uh, would make coverage a little bit better than it is now. And but if they.
But it doesn't need to be separated by seven feet from this pole. Or from, cause, not because they needed the bigger unit.
No.
Oh.
No. But I. That's the, that's, that's the proposed unit right there with the mopper and everything. That's, that's what it's gonna look like.
Okay, so it would be.
Yeah.
But I want to point out to everybody that it shows proposed that's over fifty feet. So even though we're giving them seven and a half feet, when they add the other stuff, the total height of that is over fifty.
Right. It's the pole itself that.
Pole on top of it, the appliance will add to it. So it's a fifty-foot.
It will.
So it's an over ten-foot compared to what's currently there for the neighbors.
And then the other question was, although we got that one letter today, there was another more impacted resident that had been emailing, um, Meredith.
Oh, that's.
That's a different location.
Oh, that's the other location. So they were at the same time. Okay. Cause we have another one that'll come forward then. Okay. So it, so it is picking up where we already know of at least two requests. But it's, it's different if it's a smaller one versus that sixty-three cubic foot refrigerator size one.
And Verizon's made a comment multiple times to us that this is just the beginning. They're gonna have many more coming down the pipeline.
Well, and that's where you, we do want to see like.
To, to, to help address your concern, which is a legitimate concern. If you, you could approve the forty-seven foot pole as long as the unit on top is no bigger than the one shown. I mean, that would be a way to, to address that concern.
To, to dial it in. Cause it does seem like there's a trade-off, although I would love to never go higher than forty feet. If, if the people around it don't mind it, you know, it's going in their yard. I have a telephone pole in my yard. I don't know, it's because I put a a tree in front of it, so I see the tree. But if they're not, if they're okay with it and this will improve, then that's different than if we're now gonna get ten, twenty, thirty of them and some of them, it doesn't fit. So as long as you're saying that each one can a hundred percent be.
A hundred percent.
Okay.
It can be done.
I wouldn't want the precedent either. All right.
And sorry, this slideshow shows the canister up top and the dimensions down there. The width is almost fifteen or fifteen inches. And then the depth's about fifteen as well. And then the length of it total is about twenty-four.
And those are inches, not feet.
Inches, not feet.
Oh, did I say feet?
No, no, but I'm saying.
I just want to clarify.
You said it's. So fifteen inches is a lot different than a refrigerator.
The canister itself, I'd say.
Yeah, so that's good. That's good. Um. So we, so that's a different one, the sixty-five feet. So nobody there had any issues of this one going higher in this, in this exact location.
We haven't.
Anything. The person with the pole on their yard plus the surrounding.
Hmm, we haven't heard anything.
Any other questions?
Uh, I guess the only thing I could add is that in addition to the mailing, we provide electronic notice to the HOAs that have, we have a record. In this case, there is one, just the, the, where the homeowner lives. Uh, the HOA across the street is defunct, so we didn't have a contact for them. But, uh, uh, that, the president of that, um, entity, you know, did not, did not express any objections. He asked questions, but, and that was it. Appreciate the notice and.
Read these things.
And wondered whether or not this will help service.
Well, that's the thing. You don't want to impede service, but you, you're balancing service and aesthetics altogether, so. Any other questions? So now I look for a motion. For either, you can go, so today it's just about approving or denying the.
Height of the pole.
Height of this pole.
Right, correct. That's all it is. And with the appliance as depicted. Right. Only that. Yes.
Make a motion will be approved as, has been presented to us as far as the height goes.
And with that specific.
Right.
We have a motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. Thank you, guys. So next we have considering the reappointment of Financial Sustainability Committee, FFC men, FSC members, and we have treasurer show stack.
Thank you. Um, somehow I always end up batting cleanup here. Um, but, um, so we approved in December a new, um, member of the committee, uh, Raina Emmons. Uh, but all of the terms expire, uh, every three years. And this year it's gonna be in March, I'm sorry, April of two thousand twenty-four. So, uh, what we now need to do is appoint or reappoint, uh, the members um, for another three-year term, beginning April first and ending in two thousand twenty-seven. Um. I could go to background of the FSC. I already covered that. We had our, we had our investment, uh, review session back in January. Um, so I'll open it up for questions, but what I'm asking for tonight is a, is a motion to reappoint Raina Emmons, David Olson, David Petosky, and trustee Neil Garnett. I assume you want to reserve.
Correct.
Anyone have any questions? And if not, I look for a motion.
No moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky, support. Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That does pass. Next, we have approved the payroll and vouchers for March eleventh. We've all had a chance to look them over. I'd look for a motion unless there's any changes.
Some move.
Motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. And next, our final motion.
I move adjourned.
Motion by clerk Brooke?
Support.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll see everyone in two weeks.